Board of Mayor and Aldermen, thank you, Mr. Stuckey, for correcting me so everybody can hear me. For those that are watching on television, it looks like a different night. We may call this the baptism of fire tonight. So we have four new Aldermen. We're excited about the elections and the people have decided to serve in our community. And so they're sitting around the table as Aldermen-elect. And in a little while, we'll have them sworn in and we'll be having committee assignments. So we wanted them to sit on this work session because these are things they're going to be seeing. So the next item on the agenda is for me to call the role. And so I've got Alderman Barnhill.
Here.
Alderman Blanton.
Here, sorry, green button.
Alderman Hanson. Alderman Peterson. Alderman Berger.
Here.
Alderman Brown.
Here.
Alderman Potts.
Here.
Alderman Baggett.
Here.
And Alderman Martin.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Good, thank you. Delayed response. Electronics not what they used to be. Next is the opportunity for citizens to make comments for items that are not on the agenda. And tonight, I have one speaker, and that's Jill Bergen, who is from the Heritage Foundation, that wanted to make some, a brief introduction. So welcome, Jill.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Jill Bergen. I'm here on behalf of the Heritage Foundation of Williamson County. And really, we just wanted to congratulate the new Aldermen and welcome you to this process. And our whole staff is, they're dedicated to help you in any way if y'all have questions. As you know, we produce the three signature festivals in downtown Franklin. We also own and operate the Franklin Theater and manage the Downtown Franklin Association, Merchants Association. And we really appreciate y'all for your efforts throughout the campaign process and your willingness to step forward, really, and serve this community. So congratulations. We appreciate the outgoing Aldermen and we appreciate y'all for doing this. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Jill. One other item that I have, which is not a citizen comment, it's my comment, but Representative Whitson called me earlier today and he left all the Aldermen, a Tennessee state flag that's flown over the Capitol. And the new Aldermen-elect, he's left one of these legislative books. I've forgotten what you call them. Yeah, the yellow one, it used to be the blue book. And there was a really great year when it was orange. So. Item number one is event permit for Christmas parade sponsored by the Quanis Club of Franklin on December the 4th in downtown Franklin. Anybody got any questions about that one?
Just want to note that the parade is back and we're excited to see that happen. It's a big event. Quanis are excited to have it back and the parade steps off at 2:00 PM on December 4th.
And next is event permit for Dickens of a Christmas by the Heritage Foundation on December the 11th and 12th. Any questions about that? We're glad to see that one. Item number three is ordinance 2021-44, an ordinance to rezone 12 acres from R1 to PD's 0.92 district for the property located north of Boyd Mill Avenue and west of Glass Lane at 600 Boyd Mill Avenue, the historic Magnolia Hall PUD subdivision. Joey, you going to take that?
I will, thank you. And for the new Aldermen-elect, I'm Joey Bryan. I'm a principal planner in the current planning division here at the city. And I guess you'll be seeing a lot of me as we present the various development projects that come through, so looking forward to working with all of you. And Alderman Martin, it's been a pleasure to work with you, so I just wanted to say that as well. So this is for the Magnolia Hall PUD subdivision. It's going to be located, if you're familiar with the Magnolia Hall Estate out on Highway 96 West. It's the old Italianate mansion built a long time ago. So. So this is for the rezoning and the rezoning to plan district. That's good to know, yeah. So yeah, this is, the plan district is to accommodate any sort of plan unit development or development plan that comes through. It's a special zoning for proposed entitlements with the specific developments. And this, for any rezoning, we look to our envisioned Franklin land use plan, which kind of has a 20-year scope of how we see the city growing and the specific uses within certain areas. And with envisioned Franklin, there are different design concepts. And for this particular property, this is in the conservation design concept, which recommends a preservation of 50% open space. So the plan as proposed does meet the plan district with the recommendations of envisioned Franklin. Staff recommends approval, as does the planning commission.
Questions, comments? Where at, Alderman Barnhill?
This is the entire piece of property. Because I was thinking there was more than 12 acres there, but that's all there is.
Yes.
Is that good? Keep going. Item four is resolution 2021-151.
Thank you again. Resolution, I'm not used to this. We hadn't sat on the floor for ages. A resolution approving a development plan for historic Magnolia Hall PUD subdivision with five modification of development standards. Sidewalks retaining walls for the property located north of Boyd Mill Avenue and west of Glass Lane at 600 Boyd Mill Avenue. Establish public hearing for December the 14th, 2021.
Thank you. This is for the specific development plan where we get into more site details about the specific development project or the planning developments. So in total, the applicant's proposing 11 residential lots. That's including the historic Magnolia Hall Estate. And you can see the diagram there on the screens. It is in the conservation subdivision of envisioned Franklin. And with certain areas, we do give a special consideration within envisioned Franklin, including Magnolia Hall. And envisioned Franklin states that the historic home and existing view shows that the property should be preserved. Limited clustered, single-family infill may be appropriate of historic estates and surrounding buildings are integrated and transition should be provided to the historic buildings. And it should make those historic buildings a prominent feature of any development. So the plan as proposed does meet the 50% open space recommended by envisioned Franklin, as well as maintaining Magnolia Hall as the focus of the development. With plan unit developments or development plans, the applicant can request modifications from our development standards where they propose their own standards. There are five such requests with this plan. The first three modifications are very similar. They are requesting to not require external sidewalks or exterior sidewalks along the exterior perimeter of the development. We have a sidewalk exhibit as one of our exhibits, if you can pull that up. Let me get a chance. So they have to, yes, that's it. So they have to request removal of exterior sidewalks based on location on the property. So there are three locations. First, along Highway 96 West, along Glass Lane, and along Boyd Mill Avenue that the applicant is requesting to not require external sidewalks. Our planning and regulation documents really promote pedestrian walkability. So we do require that all new developments require sidewalks, both internally and externally, to connect the various areas of the city together. And the city of Franklin periodically receives requests to construct sidewalks in existing neighborhoods where a sidewalk was not previously requested. Generally, sidewalk gap projects are much more expensive to construct than if they were constructed at the time of the development. So that's why we require them upfront. So staff does recommend denial of modification of standards 1 through 3 for the external sidewalk removal. BOMA, not BOMA, you're BOMA. Planning Commission did recommend approval of these modifications, but that the developer pay $19 per square foot for future sidewalk gap projects. And Paul, do you want to go and take it over from here?
Yes, and good evening and welcome, Aldermen-elect. I'm Paul Holes and the engineering director. Look forward to getting to know you and working with you as we move forward. One thing I wanted to highlight, as Joey stated, is that we generally will always require sidewalk with new development. Over the last few years, we've spent, and I've not done a comprehensive total of this, but around $9 million filling in gap sidewalk projects. On Highway 96, we built a multi-use trail. We have one under construction right now. We built a sidewalk on 96 East recently. We just recently filled in gap sidewalks in Fieldstone Farms Parkway. The other projects our street department took on, I don't have that cost, include South Royal Oaks Boulevard sidewalk gap project, Forest Crossing Boulevard sidewalk gap project, Oak Meadow, Corruthers Parkway, the Conference Center gap sidewalk project. And you get the message that we're delivering. These projects filling in gap sidewalks take up a significant amount of time. They're extremely expensive. We have to buy right away. We have to relocate utilities. They're much easier to do on the front end with development. And in this case, there are multiple schools with Franklin Special School District being right there. There's multiple parks. Our recommendation is that they go in. As Joey stated, that the planning commission did not require, they recommended paying the fee in lieu of. Staff is still of the opinion that these sidewalks should go in. Outside of traffic, it's probably the next biggest request we hear and get from our citizens is to try to install sidewalks. And they're extremely difficult and extremely time-consuming along some of these major roadways.
Go ahead, Alderman Blanton, and I'll go with Alderman Martin after that.
So I'm somewhat familiar with this property. High school friend grew up there. But, so a couple of questions. There's some accessory buildings, like there's one on this development plan that looks like it's disappeared. And I know there's a, and it's showing here, the side, it's not, it wasn't a residence, but Hooper made it a residence. It's right there. What will stay and is it considered historic? Are some of the buildings on the outside? I know there's one on Culberson that sits there. It was more like a garage that held like equipment. I don't know that it was built when the house was built. And then the second thing is, if memory serves, on Glass Lane, there's a rock wall that goes a significant amount of that property. And putting a sidewalk there, that rock wall is pretty close to Glass Lane. So I would be concerned about sidewalk right there. And those residents on Glass Lane, there's probably maybe four homes that are built there. So I could see making sure that there's sidewalk, but I'm concerned about the historic wall.
I can say that I hadn't studied it personally in detail, but our team did look at it. They did see that the sidewalks were all feasible and could be implemented with development. We could certainly go back and take a look at those rock wall features and dig into that a little bit more if you'd like.
Yeah, on the west side, it's the old plank fence that's painted. But on Glass Lane, it's a significant, I mean, significant wall.
And to answer your first question, if I understand it, that they are, it's their intention to preserve as much of the property as possible. If you've worked with Mr. Butler before, you know he's very attuned to preserving as much as they can. He's also willing to do the necessary improvements to the pond that currently is along 96.
Go ahead, Alderman Martin.
No one wants sidewalks more than I. But in this case, if the planning commission recommends approving the modifications of standards to do without, I would make a request that you take that money and finish Lewisburg Avenue.
That's a parting shot, Alderman Martin. Way to go.
If we could build Lewisburg Avenue sidewalks for that cheap, we'd do it.
Alderman Barnhill, go ahead.
You've got, you're getting the multi-use trail on the other side of 96. So you're asking for the sidewalk on the opposite side. You've got a sidewalk on Boyd Mill on the other side from the side that you're asking for. And I'm not sure if you did that, I'm not sure where Glass Lane connects to or goes to. So what, and I'd be more interested, not necessarily where it's going, but how much we're talking about if it's 19, what was it, $19 a?
Square foot.
Square foot. What did that calculate out to be?
I did not calculate that before the meeting, but we will have that number for you.
Do that. And because I'm somewhat inclined to take the money and use it wherever we need to use it, maybe, not necessarily.
I've already asked for it.
Yeah, but you're not going to be here in a couple hours.
He's taking over your territory.
So let's look at that from that standpoint. But I would say that you've got them on both ends and you've got a real sidewalk on the other side on 96, if and when it gets completed. And you've got one on Boyd Mill there too. So I was just trying to think, they come out, you've got them inside the area where the park is there also. So look at that closely and see what we can do on that.
One of the things I think we also heard at planning commission was about the constructibility of that portion. Do you all want to weigh in on that?
We'll take another look at it, but I talked to our team. They felt that it was all very feasible to do with the development. It'll be very hard to do after the development, but they have the ability where they don't have to go get easements on other properties. So that was what I was told. I can certainly dig into it with them and make sure that it is all very feasible.
Okay. Alderman Peterson, go ahead. Alderman Peterson, go ahead.
Of course, I was there for the planning commission meeting whenever this was discussed. And there were quite a number of people from either the, some right in the area, but others that were just concerned about the historic aspect of this. But let me say, if you go out there and look at where this, the boundary there on Highway 96 West, it goes down 10 or more feet just right there. I mean, and also, as was already stated, there's going to be a very, very nice wide sidewalk. That's right, on the other side of this. And so, as I say, it, you know, looking at that, you can't, you know, where you're looking, I mean, where it is right now, there is no way to put that right next to the road. And as I say, if you go any further onto their property, this property here, it just goes right down. And also, if you're looking at that kind of upper corner there, it's really, really, you know, if you look at the contours there, they are terrible from there going up for at least, I don't know, 10, 20 feet or more and everything. So it's really not going to be really convenient. And I saw one place where they were talking about maybe trying to do something, you know, that was not right there on the, on the street itself. But that, also, the lake there is very, very close there. So it's really, it's really, I mean, if you go out there and actually look at it and walk it, I mean, I didn't walk it, but I did drive around there several times. It's not going to be very easy to do this. But let me go on and I have some more to say. And as also, as Alderman Barnhill said, on Boyd Mill, there's no sidewalk from here all the way down to 11th or wherever it is on that side of the street. But on the other side of the street, there is a sidewalk all the way down. And had someone who's.
Like your sidewalk, you have to cross the road to get to it.
That's right, that's right. And also, on the other part, let's see, I guess, get on the bottom there. I guess it would really be on the western part of it. Once you get out, I mean, I don't know whether it's on Culberson or whether it's on where Boyd Mill comes back again there and everything. There's a very nice sidewalk all the way up to where Boyd Mill hits, you know, I mean, there's a traffic signal there. So, you know, if you had a crossing for the school and, you know, you could, you could maybe even have something like, you know, the little pedestrian crossing there and everything. And so anybody could get to the other side. So as I say, the, a number of people spoke about this, but also, we were saying that really there are some options there that would fit in with what's already there or what's coming on the other side of 96 West too.
One thing I would just add to is, the developer is proposing to rehab the lake. So if you were to ask us to come back in the future and try to put this sidewalk in, it would be extremely difficult because of the contours that you just mentioned. However, with them rehabbing the lake, now would be the time to do the grading that you need to do to put it in. Now, we'll respect whatever decision you make. You want to take the money, we can absolutely go that route and do that. But just understand, extremely difficult to do this after the development is the point.
Before we get to the place where we're voting on this, you know, at another meeting, please give us the contours there. I mean, show us where, I mean, because that thing just goes right down, right on that corner there. And as I say, please have those and have them so that we can look at them. Because that is not easy.
And maybe some photos of the rock wall?
Vice Mayor?
I think that I have some issues here with somebody trying to do something totally out of the box and give us some real uniqueness here and yet trying to hold the city standards. Get that all day long, that we have city standards. But this is out of the box and I really want to see this keep and retain the rural character that Bernie Butler's trying to do here. And so I'm not in favor of these internal sidewalks because this is an internal community which will be easy to move around in and everything. And some of the things he proposed in here was trying to keep that rural feel that we all are losing. And we're talking about this all the time. How do we keep, you know, not do everything so urban or so dense or whatever? And here, he's bringing us a great plan. And so I'm not sure these sidewalks really make sense. And I think next week, or two weeks from now, when we have the public hearing, I think we're going to hear from a lot of neighbors out there that don't want these sidewalks around that area. Internally, I can't support the sidewalks internally. I see what he's trying to do. I've seen the development at our joint meeting and I like that. And I think that is bringing us something unique for a unique piece of property that's historic. So I'm with Ann. I'd like to see the contours of that because I think it's really important to look at that. To me, it does make sense around 96 because we've got that other one across the street. So usually, we put one on one side of the street and not the other sometimes when we're trying to build sidewalks like this. So I'll be interested in, I'll also be interested to hear from the neighbors when they come in for the public hearing.
Alderman-elect, Baggett.
I guess I'll kick this off then. So as I look at this, as a father who uses a double-wide stroller regularly on sidewalks in the city, access, you know, down here, the, I guess, what direction is? This is the west side. There it looks like to be a little alleyway out to Boyd Mill. Connecting, it is out of the view of the historic structure, but could connect into that existing sidewalk on Boyd Mill that could connect then the neighborhood to the existing sidewalk infrastructure that already exists. If we're going to do away with that internally, or if that is something that the board's considering, having some access, whether that be inside or outside of the development. I don't know what the dimensions are, if it can even, I don't want to mess with the lot necessarily, but just making it easy to connect to that sidewalk. And that may just, that may be too much. But getting to the existing structure would be, would be helpful for those residents. And I don't know that the exterior necessarily accomplishes that at this point. But, and I would echo, the north side is very problematic. But yeah, just a thought there. There's already existing infrastructure there, the sidewalks to the west, that we could connect to. If you could connect to those, use some of those funds to connect to that more easily.
In reference to that though, that means he has to cross somebody else's property, happens to be the city's, to get to that, right? I've got mine right here. Isn't that?
Yes, sir.
So you're not, so it's not, you don't, you couldn't require him to do that with him having to negotiate a requirement to come to the city, to come across the city's property to connect to that. So, I mean, we can get out and, I guess, sell the property to him, donate the property to him, whatever you want to do, some way or another. But you're just looking at that piece of property right there is what you're looking at.
Go ahead, Alderman Berger, you had a question?
I just have a question. That internal sidewalk that he wants or that doesn't want to put in there. I understand if he does put that in there, we lose those beautiful trees. Because I, we talked about that at the joint workshop and that was one of the problems.
That did come up at planning commission. And Assistant Director of Engineering, Jimmy Wiseman, did say that there is some flexibility about where the sidewalk can go to help preserve the tree row to the front of the house.
Right, and also, it's $19 square foot. So wouldn't we just be requiring him to pay what sidewalks he wouldn't put in that were required?
Yes.
Because, to me, that's an awful lot that's being, well, we'll talk about that next time. It'll be fine.
My man, I may weigh in just a little bit. I understand the challenges on 96 West as far as the sidewalk, because of the drop-off. On Glass Lane, that's a pretty steep incline going down that hill and there's a huge dip down there and I can see some challenges there. But I'm thinking of kids that may live in this neighborhood. I'm thinking about the need for a sidewalk internally. I'm thinking about that sidewalk on Boyd Mill that would connect, and I'd like to see some other connectivity, how that actually connects, a little bigger picture as far as the connectivity goes there. I'm trying to look, as you go toward the park there, Jim Orin Park. Is there some sidewalk opportunity there?
And I apologize for not having that. What we can do for the next meeting is put together a sidewalk exhibit that's further zoomed out and you can see what benefit or lack of benefit they provide and make your own determination.
Because I can see, you know, I would worry about a kid that walks out of the development and then he's crossing Boyd Mill. Boyd Mill's got quite a bit of traffic on it now because it's kind of a cut-thru for a lot of people. So, you know, if they don't have to cross the street and they can get on the sidewalk, that's good. The other thing is, I looked through my notes today and I couldn't find it, but some of the road standards, I understand he wants a different type of road surface and a different type of concrete shoulder to that road. And I don't have any problem with a shoulder, but I have great concern about a road that the city is going to own and what is our upkeep obligation on that in the future? I just keep thinking about Eastern Flank and Harlinsdale where we saved a bunch of money, but ended up costing us a bunch of money because it was a lousy road. So I'm concerned about that. And I understand that Mr. Butler's trying to get a certain aesthetic feel and look to it. But also, I'm concerned about the next board, or the board after that, having to pony up money to fix something that may not be totally standard for the city.
Just to address that. Just, just to address that concern, I do know that his street pavement section is complying with city standards, and I do know that our Public Works and Engineering Department is accepting of the thickness of it for the long-term maintenance. There are two other issues of which he has to go to the Appeals Board to get resolved prior to this coming back to the board, which may be adding to some of the confusion, and that'll happen, either he'll accept our conditions of approval, or he'll go through that appeal process prior to going forward to the full board. But the actual thickness of material, I do know our Public Works and Engineering team is in agreement with what he's proposing.
What, what is he appealing?
He's appealing the width of the roadway, and, well, it's up to him. He may choose to appeal the width of the roadway, and he may choose to appeal the stream buffering that's been proposed, are the two items that are still unresolved.
I'm sorry, Ms. Clayton, go ahead.
Excuse me, ma'am, I meant to, just to make sure you assist, indeed, may I, at least the Clayton Park Director. Since my home, my second home is located right next to the street.
She lives across the street.
Just to share is, on Culberson Avenue, you have sidewalks on both sides, as you come into the park, and leads all the way down to Tepwood. So, as a, as a park director, as we talked about connectivity, being able that a resident, whether, whatever's the decisions you bring, the sidewalks out of the subdivision, but once you get to the main entrance, if there's a way to connect pedestrians safely to an existing sidewalk on Culberson, then that might be something to take at, at least, Paul to take a look at. The other entrance that was mentioned tonight is a maintenance entrance that's been there as city property. It currently is broken gravel to asphalt. That would have to be something that is discussed, whether that needs to become a room as a connection. From a park standpoint, we would not want this as a, a drive by any means, but having a pedestrian connection, we do have those kind of connections, Good Claremont and other areas, into a park. So that might be something we take a look. If you, if the desire is to take funding from the development, then maybe that is a piece that can, can be connected and done correctly under engineering standards. Thank you for letting me speak to that.
Mayor, just one, one-
Fred Alderman-Barnhill.
The comment that you made when, from Boyd Mill, Boyd Mill right at the corner of, of Claiborne, what is it, Culberson?
Culberson.
It probably connects, then, I'm just, by memory, what, you know, what you're talking about, I don't think it would be anything to connect to that corner down there where-
There's sidewalk there.
Right, sidewalk there, and there, and you're talking about you want sidewalk on Boyd Mill coming out. I don't disagree with that. I think that would be appropriate.
So it sounds like it would be helpful for us to provide some more-
I think so.
-graphics and description of the sidewalk situation. I'd really like to know what he's going to do on the width of the road, because quite frankly, narrowing the road and not requiring a sidewalk within where the folks live would really make me think twice about that. So I, maybe we can get some clarity in terms of that aspect, and just see how those, all those pieces fit together for you.
Alderman-elect, Potts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, along your same concerns, as you were talking about children and pedestrians and the schools, I, I know that there is at that intersection that you were referencing in the mornings and in the after, I'm all but sure in the afternoons, I know for sure in the mornings, at the intersection of Glass and, and 96, where there is a cross, crossing guard there that helps with children to get across right now. I would also be interested to see there, as well as at this new intersection there at Culberson and 96, if the school has plans, or if the Franklin Police Department has plans to have any additional crossing guards there as well, or if they have any idea of what the child traffic might be in that area.
We talked about that, and Glass and 96.
Well, that was one. There is a crossing guard there.
There is a crossing guard there now.
Yes.
And that there is a pedestrian signal at the other end.
Yes.
Yes.
That is an activated pedestrian crossing. Can we look at it?
Mr. Mayor, if I-
Do the last one, go ahead, Alderman-Petersen.
Thank you. Well, for a person who lives in a subdivision that does not have curb and gutter, and it's also kind of, if you want to say, at a dead end, you know, it really, and people walk out in the street, you know, and so I'm thinking about that little interior road there, you know, there's, there's going to be very little traffic on that. I can't see anybody going in there to try to cut across anything. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't go, you know, it doesn't cut across. So, so really, the, the walkability inside there really would not require a sidewalk. As I say, we, we don't have sidewalks, as I say, we don't even have curb and gutter. We, we don't, we don't have sidewalks, and we walk there every day, you know, and you can walk out in the street, because there's no traffic.
Okay, item five, which is Parkland Impact Fee Agreement for this property. Anybody got a question about that, if you want? Tell us about it very quickly.
Don't mind at all. So as Joey and Paul has already shared, there's 10 homes in here, Parkland Impact Fees are essential to the development, to pay for their proportionate share of the impact they have on the park system. And so, this particular contract brings for a, an impact fee that's just fees only. So it'd be a total impact fee of, impact fee of $43,040. Happy to answer any questions?
Total?
Total, as a total.
Just for Parkland?
It's 10 homes, it's $4,304 per home, and it's $43,040.
Oh. Well, now that we've talked about the Parkland Impact Fee, I'm going to have to back up, because we skipped two of the modification of standards, so, Joey, we got carried away walking on a sidewalk.
Very exciting.
So, give us the two.
It's all very exciting. So MOS number four is very similar, it's for removal of internal sidewalks, and staff is recommending approval with the condition that they install essentially half of the internal sidewalks. It starts at the, kind of the lower half of the cul-de-sac and extends all the way down to Boyd Mill Avenue. And we did discuss the location in relation to the historic tree row, and the exhibit you see there is not where the sidewalk necessarily has to go, just more of an exhibit of where it could go. So staff is recommending that at least only half of the internal sidewalks be, or constructed. Planning Commission did recommend approval of removing all internal sidewalks, with the condition that the applicant pay $19 per square foot towards the fees and lieu for future sidewalk gap projects. And the fifth modification is for location of a retaining wall within five feet of the public right-of-way, and staff and Planning Commission recommended approval of that due to the location of the pond and the kind of other limitations of the property. So happy to answer any questions with those.
Is that green?
The green is a proposed trailway, and so we wanted to just show that the sidewalk along Glass Lane could, in theory, tie into the proposed trail along that side of the pond, and meet the requirements of having a sidewalk along Glass Lane.
Where's the, the rock wall?
The rock wall is on the, the lower side of the pond, on the western side, close to where the curve is into the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
So it's within five feet of the internal right-of-way.
Now, I can go to six, okay, which is Orange 2021- Dash forty-six. That's a good job. Thanks, Eric. Button pusher. Which is to rezone 6.87 acres from Regional Commerce to RC 6 District of PD 39.44 per 8,595 district, for the property located north of Cool Springs Boulevard and east of Mack Hatcher Parkway at 151 Cool Springs Boulevard.
Thank you. This is similar to the previous rezoning request to a planned district to accommodate the Haven at Cool Springs planned unit development, and with this development, they are proposing 297 multifamily residential units, as well as 8,595 square feet of commercial space. And the Envision Franklin Plan places this property in the Regional Commerce design concept, and new development within Regional Commerce contain high intensity, high intensity activity centers that attract large numbers of people and employers from both within and outside of the city, and that these areas include major employment and revenue generators that are valuable community resources. New development should have integrated designs with coordinated access amenities and cohesive architecture that fits with the context of the corridor. So what they propose with this rezoning is consistent with Envision Franklin, and staff and Planning Commission recommend approval.
All right, good. Why don't we go to the, I'm sorry?
More apartments?
Vice Mayor said more apartments. Item seven was Resolution 2021-150 for Resolution approving a development plan for Haven at Cool Springs, PUD subdivision for the property located that we were just talking about, so. Go ahead, Joey.
So, again, it's for 297 multifamily residential units, as well as 8,595 square feet of commercial space, and the commercial space would be located on the ground floor. Within Regional Commerce, multifamily, or apartments, or could be condos, is permitted as a use, so it is supported by both Envision Franklin and the zoning ordinance. So with new multifamily residential is encouraged with Regional Commerce to create lively, walkable neighborhoods near restaurants, shops, grocery stores, and workplaces. First floors are encouraged to have active commercial spaces, including retail restaurants, leasing offices, and other amenities. Also, ground floor units should also have external entrances, so they can also utilize the pedestrian access as well. So staff recommends approval with conditions, as does Planning Commission. Happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Alderman-Barnhill.
Do you want, do you want to reference the, the new, the road alignment and what it does to the, to the project next to it, and the, and coming down and going to the signalized intersection? I mean, we've been looking at that for years, and-
I can say that our Engineering Department has reviewed this, and it does currently meet-
Beats, meets our needs?
Yes.
It's what we want to do?
Yes.
Okay.
And it does provide cross-access connectivity as well.
Right. And we'll close one off, close one access off, a non-intersec, a non-signalized intersection, and move it, and move it to a signalized intersection, and it'll connect both this property and the one closest to Mack Hatcher then.
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. For the Alderman-elect, y'all clear, do you understand what we're talking about?
We see, we need to see a better picture there, because you see where, thank you.
You're talking Wind Cross Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor, or am I recognized?
Go ahead, you're recognized.
Because I use the green cleaners across the street, and it is terrible that, so is, am I hearing that, that, that existing is going to be shut off, or the existing right-in, right-out, or, yeah, explain, explain the traffic flow, if you don't mind.
Come on up. We've got the answer, man.
I get the signalized, that, where it exists, but-
Good evening. I'm Ryan McMaster with Kimblehorn, and the existing access point is proposed to be converted to a right-in, right-out only. So there'll be no left-hand movements leaving the existing development, and there'll be no left-hand movements turning in.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Smart of-
Let us see the whole setup.
Yeah, I think what Alderman-Petersen is wanting to see is how, how it comes off Cool Springs, how it aligns with, what is that, wind gate?
Wind cross.
Wind cross.
Toward the light will be.
And make sure everybody understands that. Come on up.
Thank you.
Yeah, we want to activate all the consultants here tonight.
That's right.
Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Dwight Kaiser, I'm a landscape architect, the founder of Kaiser Veteran Design, and a proud residence of War II. Thank you.
War II Alderman, ladies and gentlemen.
I believe we have, whoever's controlling the, the video, or the, has a, there's a rendering, site, color site plan rendering that indicates the, the street sections that you're talking about. We've been working on this project for roughly, since 2014, it's, and always, we've been trying to fix out this cross-access easement, because as you know, when the MOB was originally approved, I think, there we go, it was a little bit too close to the Mack Hatcher intersection. If you'll, if you can see this, there is an alignment with Wind Cross Court, where there is an existing light, and that would be updated. There's indication of the curve that comes in across both faces of both projects, and then connects into the existing private access drive, which will give much better traffic handling capabilities, obviously, than what we're, we're working with now. There's also a number of utilities that are going in there, including a 24-inch water main that will soon be installed, so there's a lot of work. And the site sits about 65 feet from top to bottom as it drops off. This project uses a parking deck to actually fill the hole, so there is no exterior parking, everything's under the, the six-story building that is proposed.
Everybody clear now?
Is that on part two or part three, and Powers, any kind of idea?
Mayor Moore? I'm, I'm the owner of the adjacent property where the access goes through, is it okay my-
Sure, come on up.
So. Like, these guys next door, we're, we've all been, oh, Eric Powers with the Innovations Group, Architects Developers, and we're the owners of the property next door to this, where the access happens at the traffic light. So, you know, we, all of these property owners, obviously, we've been working diligently with you guys for many years, trying to figure out how to solve the logistics of this, this corridor, if you will, down through here, and so it's a lot to it. I think the, and we certainly understand the logistics and the need to work the access across our property to get to the traffic light, and we're, we're more than willing to try to work together to make that happen. I am concerned about the logistics of how the impact of the traffic, that much traffic coming through, I think we just have to consider that correctly, and make sure the impact of that traffic, if it comes across my property, doesn't unduly burden our property to the, what, what all that's going to be. So that's, we, that's, those are things that'll need to get worked out as we continue to work through this, but I just think it's something that we all need to consider. It is a very difficult logistical challenge as to the properties and how they connect, and we recognize that, and certainly these guys that are working on the site next door absolutely, too. So I just wanted to make that point, that we do need to consider that, especially if we're going to go to, you know, 297 units next door. I think multifamily is a, is a great use for this zone. So I do agree with that, but just making sure we work out the, the impact of that's all I would want to recognize, so.
Any other questions or comments? Can we move on to the Parkland Dedication Fee?
Say that there is a flood back in the back of that, but it's not-
It's not being impacted.
Not being impacted at all.
Thank you.
Any questions about the Parkland Impact Fee? Go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not sure that this is on the Parkland Impact Fee, but it's on the comments that the gentleman just made about using his property to be able to loop around to gain access. Are there, and you'll, we'll just chalk it up to being new, but are there any plans to open anything up onto Mack Hatcher, coming off of those other two buildings right there?
No, we're, we're not able to provide, it's a limited access state route, and, and that's not really an option.
Okay.
For this property owner, or really anybody else on, on Mack Hatcher.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Girth.
Thank you. Good evening, Alderman, Alderman-elect. I'm Vernon Girth, one of the Assistant City Administrators, and focus my attention on supporting our great team on growth management, capital projects, historic preservation, but really maintaining the quality of life in our community that we've come to enjoy. In this particular property, you see there's three property owners. One that's not represented here is Jason Ritson and his partner that has the corner property in the existing medical building. We've worked for many years, as they have said, to try to get a connection across those properties that provide adequate access without overly impacting- properties that provide adequate access without overly impacting Cool Springs Boulevard anymore. With the new northwest section of Mack Hatcher opening up, it's anticipated there'll be more vehicular traffic on Cool Springs Boulevard and we'll find that out in the next couple of months, of course. But the point of, of me coming up today is that we, when we work with development professionals like Mr. Powers, Jason Ritson, Dwight, and Ryan McMaster and their clients, we expect this level of cooperation to ensure we're doing the right thing for the community as well as the property owners. So I compliment them too in working through these details. It's taken a while.
Everybody good with the Parkland Impact Fee? And thanks for those comments, Mr. Girth. How about number nine? City of Franklin Contract 2021-0283, a professional services agreement with Los Design for Design Services for Liberty Park Expansion, a lump sum amount of $359,000.
So good evening again. So engineering assists parks and the management of a lot of the parks capital projects, but the Parks Department, through a lot of public outreach and involvement, really set the vision for these. And so back in early 2020, BOMA moved forward with a professional services agreement with Los Design to update the Liberty Park Master Plan. And now we're at a point where we're ready to move forward with that initial phase of design ultimately to get to a construction project. And so Los will be moving forward with the tennis courts, the pickleball facility, main restroom, playground addition, open air, farmer's market, the batting cages, mountain bike trails, and some seating enhancements, and there'll be other site improvements. Lisa's up here, the master plan. We made sure we had a copy of the latest master plan just in case y'all had any questions or concerns.
This will be done in phases as we're utilizing Parkland Impact Fees in this particular quadrant. And so we're very fortunate to have that this is the, the quadrant that receives the most development. So, but this will be completed in phases. So the first phase you'll see of a good bit. Liberty Park was constructed in 2003 and was opened then, and so it's a lot of travel baseball and our Franklin Baseball Club utilizes it, but we also have a dog park and the disc golf course already on site in McKay's Mill, and those residents utilize this park. So it's 85 acres and so we're ready to, we're excited about this new development through here. Thank you.
And just as a point of reference, almost all of our parks have some level of a master plan that we're constantly getting feedback from the community and updating and is really just our long-range guide as funding is available.
Does this do away with any current amenities that are, that are currently provided or is this just adding?
This is adding, absolutely.
And this is reflective of feedback we got from the board probably six, seven months ago related to this plan, so...
Absolutely.
This is following through on that as well.
And can we say, I, I think now it's saying that what we're looking at is like 14.7 million, but on our CIP it only shows like 5.4 million, so that, that's what we have.
That's the phasing. Mm-hmm. So the, the phasing, yes ma'am. So thank you for bringing that up. So as the memo suggested, there's quite a few, but what's being included in here is a multipurpose field to where it can be utilized by citizens, it can be utilized by, for flag football or cricket or anything as such. We also have some additional, we needed some ADA accessibility to our existing batting cages that's on site. We will also have a cricket batting cage, we will have mountain biking trail system, farmer's market, as well as a pavilion. And what was asked of Alderman Smitty, he's not around the table right now, is for us to take a look at basketball or some type of to wear, multipurpose to wear, because we only have the basketball court at Jim Warren. So we've included that in the, in that particular one. The total is over 14 million, so there's a lot that's included in the master plan. So we're going to stay within the budget of what's approved in the CIP, but these are the first phase of projects to come through. So hopefully as Parkland generates in this quadrant, then the next phase will come as the money comes along.
So you don't have a, so you don't have a timeframe, you have a money frame?
We, we have a money frame.
It's a new term.
It's a new term, but it will be in a short period of time. So thank you. So we're excited about this, absolutely.
Okay, item 10, which is Amendment seven to the TDOT Agreement number 110291, City of Franklin Contract 2011-0129 for the Franklin ITS Extension and the Adaptive Signal Control. Please finish that.
So let me introduce Adam Moser. He's our city traffic engineer. He's probably one of the best traffic engineers across the state of Tennessee. We actually hired him as a consultant to do this project and then we've been fortunate enough and blessed to have him come join our team. So we were very, very lucky to have Adam. So there's two, this, this con, essentially what this is, this agreement with TDOT is simply extending the completion date another year. That's all we're doing here. But to give a brief overview of the two projects, one involves 19 signals in the Cool Springs area where Adam is working to install an adaptive system. And the other one is ITS equipment, and I'll let Adam give a brief overview of both. And, and really what it is is we have fiber optics that connect all of our signals, they're able to communicate with it and change signal timing on the fly from the Traffic Operations Center. So Adam, if you don't mind, just give a brief overview of both projects to introduce our new Alderman to it.
Sure. So yeah, I'm Adam Moser, the traffic engineer. I'm not definitely as good as Paul tells me I am, but I have a constant target on my back.
Yeah, everybody get your number.
Everybody, everybody's going to have to have my number, I guess. There are 19 intersections on Cool Springs Boulevard and Mallory Lane from basically the Costco C board down to Cool Springs on Mallory, and then from Mack Hatcher over to Crowthers. They operate on what's called an adaptive signal system, which measures traffic in real time and makes adjustments in real time. So the green lights will change based on volumes. It's, it's a pretty advanced system and it is done. It is working. It's been working since about June or July this summer. We do make constant tweaks to it. It is, we are in a learning process because it's, it's pretty advanced. So that's, that's almost done. In fact, we'll have a before and after report on conditions before we installed it and conditions after we installed it, hopefully by the end of the year. As far as the, this particular extension goes, this is mostly for extension of our, our cameras, our traffic cameras that we use in the Traffic Operations Center. So that piece, there's a parent project. The parent project is actually this piece, which is the smaller of the two projects, believe it or not. And the child project was the adaptive signal system under this project number, so with TDOT. It is all grant funds, 80/20, 80% federal, 20% local. And so this is just a time extension. This, this portion is taking us a little while, so that's why we got the extra year.
And not many communities in Tennessee have this. I think Mount Juliet maybe has, even Mount Juliet or Lebanon has one area, but I'm not, I'm sure there are others. Nashville doesn't have it.
They don't.
They have total, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say that. Total malfunction of all their signals, but we're pretty far ahead as far as signal control.
Do we have a question? Do you have, I know we don't have 96 intersection at 65 on here. Once that road, that four-lane road is done, is TDOT going to work with us? Are we going to redo our signals there? Because I constantly get calls about that from Ed Curd through the signal is just mind-boggling because you can't get them. You can just start up and then stop, start up and then stop. So how's that going to, I know it's not in here.
Right. So that is, that is covered under a C-MAT grant that we got a couple of years ago and we are finishing design with that.
Okay.
We just advertised a request for proposal for the technical pieces of that technology, which is software. And so we are, that is a separate project. There's 13 intersections along State Route 96 East in that project, basically from Eddie Lane all the way to Arno.
Okay.
So that is under a separate project that's in C-MAT grant.
And they shouldn't mess with that and do that until we've got that four-lane open because that's going to change everything. So how's that going to work?
Well, the, the good thing about this technology is it just learns as we go. So yes, we, so you can put it in and we'll be fine, yeah. It'll actually help us tweak it. That's what the, that system is.
Okay. Because I knew we had something in the works, but I didn't know where the heck it was.
That's right. And it does have connected vehicle components. I'm going to, we're going to come back in, I guess, January after the first of the year and kind of talk about our traffic technology so you guys are all up to date on what we're doing in the city, so.
But it really is a great way to make the infrastructure we have work as efficiently as possible. We all know adding asphalt takes a lot of time and a lot of money, and we're still going to be doing a lot of that, but this helps us maximize the efficiency of what we have so much easier with, with this kind of technology. And it is pretty unique for a community our size to have this or any community to have this. So I applaud our team for, for pursuing it and putting it in place.
For somebody who used to come, go out 96 East to the interstate every morning, yes, it really helped.
Okay.
Item 11 is grant water availability for 1200 Old Hillsborough Road. Rapidly approaching Michelle Hatcher. Push your button.
Button, there we go. Good evening. I am Michelle Hatcher. I am the Director of the Water Department. So the, let's see, the first one is 1200 Old Hillsborough Road. We normally take these availabilities to the Capital Investment Committee. This one is a little bit of a time sensitive, sensitivity because the last Capital Investment Committee meeting was canceled. So I, that's the reason why normally they're not voted on here, but just to set that precedence. So this is at the intersection of Old Hillsborough Road and Hill, Old Hillsborough Road and Hillsborough Road. There's the map, yeah, that red outline. It is a mixed-use commercial development that is planned. They're asking for four 2-inch meters and one 1-inch meter. This is within our water service area, so up in Grassland. The one thing we like about this project is the applicant has agreed to loop the water line to kind of increase the water circulation in the area, which ultimately increases the water quality. We are, the Water Department is recommending approval, the applicant is requesting approval. We're obviously recommending approval contingent upon the execution of the availability agreement, which would include, which would outline the looping of the water line. We're also recommending approval with, without the execution of an annexation agreement. And the reason for that is because this is already, we typically do annexation agreements to kind of control growth as we can manage them coming into the city. This is already in Cartwright's Creek sewer area, so it's not going to be, it's not going to be changing anytime soon.
And it's outside of your UGB.
Yes. Yeah, so I wanted to set that precedent so we were clear what we, what we were voting on. So this is on both the work session and then you'll be voting on that tonight because, so we can continue then moving forward.
Mayor. Go ahead, Alderman, Barnhill.
Can, can we ask you to assume some additional responsibilities on this? Huh?
I'm not sure what that means.
You might want to clarify before you answer that.
They need, and I know they're in the county. I know that we have no control over it, but that left turn lane into Old Hillsborough Road off of Hillsborough Road or any of those others is, is backed up traffic forever. They need to do some road improvements on that particular intersection right there where that traffic signal is, where Old Hillsborough Road comes in to make a left-hand turn north, whether it be northbound traffic, but doing a west turn lane into Old Hillsborough Road. They also need to make one that's southbound onto that, a decel lane, turning into Old Hillsborough Road also, since that's on the corner and that's going to be a pretty significant development. So here comes Mark. Mark is the one that assumes the additional.
And I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that?
I, I think, I'm glad you brought that up. In the back of my mind, seemed like we've seen that at the Transportation Policy Board.
If we have, if we have, lovely.
TDOT is planning on doing an intersection improvement in that area, so...
When?
We don't have a date on that, but we have seen some draft plans, so.
There is a bridge, I think it's just north of the intersection.
Go ahead, Alderman, Mark.
Can you hold the permission to do this work until that road is fixed?
That's a Tennessee Department of Transportation project.
Well, we don't have to give them the water until they go to the state and work it out.
I would not recommend you do that.
Hey, if it's taken this long for us to get Mack Hatcher, think, don't, don't, don't say anything that you're going to require people to get TDOT to do something before they do.
I have some familiarity with this particular project and some of the ways that they've been providing water to some of those properties are pretty archaic. I guess that's a nice way to say it. So it's very important to get this done. And this is partially a medical use in this building and so it kind of fits into that area.
If I may, sir, I apologize, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Mark Hilton, Assistant City Administrator at Public Works, so.
I picked him up on the side of the road.
So, so do we have to show up as MPO and start hangling them to get this intersection done? Is it helpful? Or who's going to MPO?
I'll be happy to speak with Jonathan about that, but I don't know that we have any influence on when they do this project.
Well...
So we could try.
You go and speak at MPO, you do.
You're exactly right. And Jonathan is our TCC representative and I'm the Transportation Policy Board representative and we certainly advocate for those projects and the county's advocated for it also, so...
Yeah, county and city are advocating.
I got another project you can talk to about.
And Michelle is advocating.
And Michelle, yeah?
The one lane.
She's not picking Mark up on the side of it.
How about item 12?
I don't know. How about it?
Change order two to City of Franklin Contract 2018-0226 with BLD Services for cured-in-place pipelining and amount not to exceed $479,000 and $300.
So this is, this is a project, we have sewer, we have a sewer main running through south of Mack Hatcher, east of Franklin Road. We recently replaced a sewer main from kind of going on the west side of First United Methodist Church to kind of the beginning of this project area. When we were connecting that project to kind of the older infrastructure that was there, we noticed that the, this, this line that's in that, the kind of clouded area is in need of some repair. It's an older line, it's, it's been subject to some corrosion issues and we wanted to move this up in our priority list of kind of repair projects that we do. So we looked at, we solicited a quote for actual pipe replacement, so full pipe replacement from the contractor that was out there. You can see in the memo, it was close, it was 850,000, so it was very pricey. We need to require, you know, get some temporary construction, use them, those types of things. BLD Services has a lining, has a main line contract, main line CIPP lining contract with us. So CIPP lining is cured-in-place pipe. We take almost like a sock and we, we invert it into the pipe. As we're pushing it through, it kind of inverts itself and it structurally, we cure it and it structurally creates a new pipe. So it's, it's less invasive. We have to dig a small pit at the manhole, you know, to put it in and then a small pit to, to get it all the way to the other side. We've been, we have, we've been doing rehab in other areas of the system with this same type of lining. So it's a good fit here because it's a, it's, it's a hard area to get to. We, this is a change order that will allow us to do that. Because it's on both work session and voting tonight, we're hoping to take advantage of the beautiful dry weather we've had. This area's in the floodplain and it dries out, it's slow to dry out. So we're hoping to kind of get that in place before the winter, when the, when the wet season sets in.
And these services were previously acquired through a procurement process. We're just adding the change order to allow us...
To do this, yes.
To do this project. So we, we competitively bid or sought the service and this just adds on this project and helps us do it much more efficiently.
Correct, yes.
Go ahead, Alderman, back.
Excuse me, since this is Ward four, and I'm sorry, pardon me if I, it's, but is the proximity and time, when was the original, I guess, agreement made? Like what timeframe? How long?
So 2018 was when we initially awarded the contract. So we typically award contracts for three years standard and then we have two one-year riders if we, if both parties can agree to the same terms.
Reason I, it's just coincidental that it is adjacent to the Emmeline Acres property. It's not, that's just, that's coincidental. It's not anything to do with that project.
Not related at all.
Okay.
It is actually, as we were doing the other work, this was discovered to need improvements.
Thank you.
Yeah.
How about City of Franklin Contract 2020-0190, a road impact fee reimbursement agreement with... agreement with Simmons Ridge.
So this, this agreement essentially updates the road impact fee agreement to reflect kind of the conditions that exist today in working with development. It was, it's a project from a development side that was approved several years ago, and this provides for their ability to access collector road impact fees, and looks at the project from that standpoint, burning, I'm sure can add some more details. I'm sure if you're coming up.
Thank you, Eric. Good evening again. Simmons Ridge was approved a number of years ago, but had an amendment about 10 years ago that landed on 408 units, and this development is located on South Caruthers Road on the east side of the interstate. And to date, probably about 200 units are, have been constructed and are occupied on the development, so there's about, they're almost halfway through. When the development came in back for that amendment, there was a condition placed that before the 241st permit was issued, that improvements to South Caruthers Road would be completed. Now, we're coming back to you today, as Eric mentioned, for a couple of reasons. First of all, at the time this project was originally approved, and even when the amendment was approved, the city did not require development impact fee agreements, roads, parks, sewer and water, to travel along with a development plan or a development plan amendment. And Lisa had talked to a couple that are going to be coming and travel along. That way, that you, as the Board of Mayor and Alderman, before rendering a decision, have the whole picture of the development. So, we're catching up with this one. Also, since this development had started, and there's a few other ones that we're affording them the opportunity to collect the collector road impact fees that they are now paying in, we, the city amended the road impact fee ordinance to require developments to pay both arterial road impact fees as well as collector road impact fees. So those develops, that developments that are either in the process or getting started, such as Simmons Ridge, on those collector road improvements, will allow them to recapture their impact fees. And as the ordinance states, they only can collect or have reimbursed up to the amount that they pay in. If the improvements, which this case are, or case is, exceed the road impact fees, they have to pay for those. And they, they knew that when this was originally developed. So, we have the plans approved, they're acquiring some easements, yet this impact fee agreement updates everything that I just said, and we recommend approval. And with that approval, we'll allow them to continue to obtain building permits as long as they have posted sureties and commenced work on site on those improvements. And the reason we're doing that is because since this development happened so many years ago, there have been other developments in the area that have proceeded.
Any questions?
Go ahead, Alderman, Peterson.
Mr. Mayor, I, I was thinking about this for some things that we're going to see later on tonight, but I thought it might be important to talk about the collector roads, which are more local roads, and we've got the, we've got the city divided into four quadrants. They're not the same thing as the wards or anything like that. And so some, we might have someone talk about where those are, and it makes, it makes a difference in collector road fees, but also in parkland fees, they, they have a similar situation where you can, you can use the money only in those particular areas. And so, I don't know, I don't know whether this is the place to, to say that or what, but that is an important idea, and there are, I know, I think I looked on the, I was thinking more road, road fees and everything, and I didn't think, look at parkland, but there are some of these quadrants that have a lot more money in them right now, because I was thinking quadrant one, which is, what, it's 96 East and all the way around to, is it Hillsborough or Franklin, what, tell, tell me.
That is a wonderful idea, and to illustrate it, because wasn't prepared for that.
I know.
We'll bring an illustration back during a work session and explain that further, both how those funds are being used within the quadrant where the development occurs, and that applies to parkland too, as well as collector road impact fees, if I, if I may.
Yeah, that's all part of, also included in your capital investment program and financing model, is how you can allocate those dollars. We do have a quadrant map of the parks, we could pull up to give you that sense, but we can also share that with you with the latest balance in each of the quadrants, both from a collector impact fee and from the parkland. This is the parkland version of that, that gives you a sense of how we've done it, and we collect those as development happens, and then we allocate it to appropriate projects within those quadrants.
And I, and I know on the roads, quadrant one, which is not exactly this, but some, but similar.
Similar, yeah.
Has like $2.3 million, and that is like more than all the rest of the, the other three put together. So wherever development is happening, then they are being, are paying in on these collector road, you know, and, and the parks too. But it, but it also means that that's where money is needed to be spent to build more roads, more parks, things like that.
Let's move on to item 14, which is procurement award to Monitoring and Management Services LLC of Franklin, Tennessee, in the total estimated amount of $84,420 for sanitary sewer pretreatment program support services, including fats, oils, and grease, commonly called fog, over a three-year initial term of award for the Water Management Department.
So this was, this was a contract, or I'm sorry, a procurement solicitation that was put out in our normal bid process. We had one respondent, Monitoring and Management Solutions, who's been a previous, who's held this previous contract. This was a little bit different than the ones we've done in the past. We're actually reducing their services year by year and, and moving those to staff that we current, staff that we currently have. So our intent is, you know, to, to within five years, to be fully self-sufficient in performing inspections on restaurants for their grease traps. We do those annually, and so this Monitoring and Management Services will be providing that support until we can fully move to our internal staff. Questions?
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Is it less expensive to bring that in-house and not contract that out with staff? I mean, in-house with staff, or is it, obviously it is, or we wouldn't be doing it, right?
It is, yes, so we have the staff that has the availability to do this, has been kind of.
We already have staff.
We already have staff that has availability, yeah, we won't be adding anyone.
And it's helpful to have that expertise in-house. So it just made sense, both from an expertise and cost-effective use of existing staff to do this service.
Okay, so we're not hiring on?
Yeah.
Let's go to the Williamson County Growth Plan Update.
As Emily's coming forward, and Andrew, let me just comment, this is a follow-up to a discussion we had a couple meetings ago. So we want to do two things through this discussion. We want to validate what we heard from that board discussion, but we obviously have some new folks coming on board, so we want to get your feedback. I have taken a pretty clear position with Williamson County, their planning staff who's facilitating that, that I'm not giving them, even though this is only a draft, we're not turning this in until I have our new board saying, yeah, this is good to at least put into the process. This doesn't lock anybody into it, but we want to, this starts the discussion, and we want to make sure our board is comfortable with this being put into the process as we start the more formal process next year. So Andrew and Emily can take you through that, and we look forward to more feedback from you, both in terms of how we've modified this based on feedback and whatever else you want to see as we go forward.
Yeah, thank you, Eric, I appreciate that. My name's Andrew Rorham, the Long Range Planning Supervisor.
I'm Emily Wright, the Planning Director.
I've got a few slides, and I'll try and go quickly, because I know we're kind of short on time. And Michael, I'll just kind of look at you and nod. The first two maps, the first two slides have maps. The aqua color represents the urban growth boundary that exists today. The yellow represents the city limits. On this particular map, it's the city limit layers from 2004, so 17 years ago, the city looked a little differently. It spanned more east to west. As you've, as you can see on the next slide, the city has grown significantly along the High 65 corridor, taking into, taking into consideration neighborhoods like Waters Edge, Simmons Ridge, Lad Park, Berry Farms, Stream Valley. So that's been a high-growth area, probably the most significant. And then to the northwest, the city has also grown to take in Brownland Farm and the properties across the river to the west, where New Mac Hatcher's coming in. So those have been kind of two areas where the city has grown in terms of going into the UGB. The city has not, there are some areas that haven't changed very much that you, you can see on the map there. And go to the next slide, please. And I found this chart, it's 20 years old. It was put together in 2000, and the urban growth boundary went into place in 2000, and this is the first time that we've looked at it in any kind of comprehensive way as part of this countywide growth plan update. In terms of this chart, I wanted to point out a couple things. The population, 20 years ago, we were at 42,000 people, now we're at 83,454, so we've, we've nearly doubled. 20 years ago, the staff also looked at residential acres and commercial industrial acres, and then projected those acreage needs for 2020, and they're pretty close. They're, on the residential side, we came in 600 acres short, but then on the commercial industrial side, we came in a little high. So the, in terms of total acreage, it was, it lined up pretty well. So we've looked at this, and we'll kind of weigh this as we look to make our 2040 projections. In terms of population, we, we do anticipate Franklin to continue to grow. We've, I've put two sources on here. One is the University of Tennessee Boyd Center for Research and Economic Research and Business, and that's required by state law in terms of the UGB update to reference their county, and they do it by county, their county projections. And then as part of the development report that our department does annually, we do population projections, and our 2030 projection is 105,000, and then our 2040 is 126,000. So that's based on historical averages, household size, and approvals. That's where we're heading at this point. This map is the staff, the initial staff recommendations for revising our urban growth boundary, and it's based off of a number of factors, I think most of you all are familiar with that. In terms of the colors on the map, the green would be areas to be added, to be included into the UGB. The areas in red would be areas to be removed from the current boundary, based on some factors. You go to the next slide. Based on the feedback we received from the board at the October work session, there is a consensus amongst the board members at that meeting to not give up any territory. So we've, we've revised, we've taken that into account and revised it. There did seem to be support to expand the UGB in the Goose Creek area, and that, again, that's kind of our high-growth area for the next, you know, short midterm foreseeable future. So we've, we were keeping that in. The area that's still in red represents the Gentry Farm and the property to the north, and there is a, a small area kind of outreach that took place with property owners out there, and sewer availability requests were denied for those two properties, so we're still recommending to remove those.
Because they asked for it.
Denied at their request.
Denied at their request, absolutely. At the last meeting, we didn't talk a whole lot in terms of the Southall Road, Carter's Creek Pike area. It's not an area the city anticipates significant growth. The boundaries, in terms of the city, we've grown very little out in that direction over the last 20 years, and we don't foresee significant growth over the next 20 years. There could be some land use type changes when Mac Hatcher is ultimately extended. That project's still a long way off, and we would account for that. I did highlight Southall Farms, which is a county development, approved under county standards, and that's sort of in the middle of that area, and I think that is now a barrier to growing beyond, and even up Southall Road. So I did want to bring that to everyone's attention, if that's an area we want to look at kind of independently. For removal, yes.
And I think it's also related to just how difficult it would be to serve and truly serve. There's topography and other issues out there, and I, while we heard you on the east, and we understand that component, this is a little different, because it's so difficult to serve, and as Andrew referenced, there's some other county development that is already moving forward, that it may make sense to remove on that basis, so.
There's also an enormous amount of environmental constraints for development in the area, so the land use pattern is not likely to be very dense at all, per envisioned Franklin recommendations, if this area were to grow. As you can see on the map, all that green area are predominantly hillsides, areas of significant slopes. So in addition, providing infrastructure through the area is not an easy task either.
Go ahead, Alderman, Barnhill.
I still think the comment that you made as far as the extension of Mac Hatcher, and at some, at some time in the future, some point in time, that will be completed. And when you do, I think that will be an area where it grows, and I'm not sure that I understand, I understand the, the topography, and I understand the hillsides, and I understand, but we got, at one time, at one time, we had water lines through there. The old, the old Hillsborough water line that came through there, that pumps into that tank that sits there, were Carter's Creek Pike and Old Carter's Creek Pike fork. So I'm not, I, I agree that it's not feasible, I mean, it's not, not the most attractive piece of property out through there, but I think that, I think that Mac Hatcher, if you had any idea, any notion, Mayor, as to when that's going to be completed, and I think, and I'll, I'll just deviate from my speech a little bit, that's the most important road project in Franklin right now. The fourth leg of that, that's the most important road project in Franklin right now.
Alderman Peterson and I are disagreeing with you.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. You and Alderman Peterson can disagree, we, that's eight of us up here. But, but that's the most important road project in Franklin. It's not on the, it's not on the list, it's not going to be done immediately, but I would be, I would look at it before I left it out, because it'll be easier to, it won't be as easy to put back in later. What's the most important road project, Mayor?
I think it's the Mac Hatcher from Columbia Avenue to 96.
The widening of southeast.
We agree on something, Alderman Peterson. That's good.
No, mine is coming from Highway 96 West around to TSC, the fourth leg, the part that's not completed. Yeah, that's, that's what I.
The southwest extension.
No, they want to widen.
You said 96 to Columbia?
They want to widen, they want to widen.
The existing southeast.
And it's had some money attributed to it now, which is a good sign, which means it's starting to move, and there is some alignment money that's been spent on the southwest section, if I remember correctly. Okay, keep going.
The Goose Creek area, because this is an area where we are experiencing growth, and we anticipate continued growth. This slide shows properties that are hatched, and those represent property owners who have asked to be removed from the proposed urban growth boundary. They do not want to be included in the new UGB. Most of those property owners are along Long Lane, and then down Patensville Road towards the end of the basin. The properties on Long Lane are in a separate basin. The Patensville Road properties are in the Goose Creek Drainage Basin, so they're kind of two basins going on. If you go to the next slide, the current city limits are shown, and you can see the existing urban growth boundary in the aqua color. The city is, has grown outwardly outside of the UGB in this area, so we've, staff feels pretty strongly that we need to extend the UGB. Now, the Long Lane area, if you go to the next slide, because it is in a Long Lane area, if you go to the next slide, because it is in a separate basin that would have had limited sewer access and availability, and based on what the property owner's desires are, we are recommending we, we trim that back pretty significantly. But staff is, at this point, continuing to recommend all the properties on Patensville Road stay in the UGB. The, the last large property on the south side of Patensville Road, one of the last properties in green, you know, we, we had some debate on, could we just cut the UGB off there? Would that be okay? But ultimately, we've decided to, to keep the whole part of the basin.
This aligns with the drainage basin, which is one of the principles we've tried to stick to throughout this review, is to make it match the infrastructure planning, and to keep that basin whole, and then the UGB just seems to make sense.
And I would add that if, if we've learned anything from the last 20 years, what we didn't do in the Goose Creek area was, we didn't follow drainage basin lines originally, and we've had multiple property owner requests to annex by referendum in this area. So I do think it's probably the wisest choice to follow the drainage basin where we can. Obviously, a property owner does not have to request annexation and can remain in the county under state law. That is their option. So I don't think that there's a, a big worry that if we were to leave this in, that, you know, we would be limiting their options by any means. I think it would just make sense if there were any ever decisions for those property owners to come into the city.
Yeah, it really allows us to plan for it. Those property owners can decide. It really gives them more options long-term. But this, again, aligns with the infrastructure planning.
And we talked a little bit about roadways and street networks, and on the last slide, you'll see the proposed street network in the Goose Creek area per connect Franklin, per the major thoroughfare plan. The engineering department provides some cost estimates for these projects. And that's, that's part of the reporting piece that goes along with the growth plan update with our review of our urban growth boundary. The state statute calls for looking at infrastructure costs and the fiscal impacts of growth in some of these areas or not. So we know that there are going to be some needed roadway projects, the extension of Carruthers, the extension of Goose Creek Bypass, a potential flyover or interstate interchange between 840 and Goose Creek, and Patensville Road improvements as well. And this was sort of a primer for the Goose Creek study that we, we've started and we'll get into in the next several months.
And so now we just want to open it up to, to all of you to hear your feedback and any thoughts or questions you may have. Keeping in mind, as you're thinking about this and things you may want to discuss, we'd love to hear your thoughts, like Alderman Barnhill started here with the discussion about Carter's Creek and the South Hall Road area, if you would like to see that remain in the UGB, or if you'd like to see it removed. Also, what your thoughts are about continuing to add the Goose Creek area. We, as staff, would recommend the tailored-back version, just to try to accommodate some of the property owner requests along Long Lane, since that is a different basin than the Goose Creek basin. And then just any other concerns or questions you may have about other areas.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Oh, we discussed this pretty extensively last time, and we talked about what to do with the urban growth boundary, and if you talked about, you know, do we remove any of it? There might be a sliver or something around there that makes sense to remove, but normally, any removal of urban growth boundaries is usually not a smart idea for a city. Giving up land, especially, let me just give an example. We have East 96, if you're going on that road out towards Wilson Pike, out towards, if you're going to Arrington. Okay, so we have the state putting in a four lane, in some places, five lane. So you know development's going to happen, but then if it happens in the county, it's county standards, and then you're dotting the landscape with more septic, septic, septic. It's an invitation to more sprawl as well. And I think it would be very unwise to take the urban growth, take the land out of the urban growth boundary in that area. And the other thing is, just holding, that doesn't mean we have to develop it at all. Doesn't mean we have to, you know, even consider it. It's just there. We hold that in our urban growth boundary. But who knows what 10, 15, 20 years will bring as far as technology with sewer, sewer systems. They're always coming up with new technology and new ways for safety and for health and safety and sewer and other things associated with sewer and alternative systems. So if we had a crystal ball, we could say, what looks, what does it look like in 10 or 15, 20 years from now? That's why I would not be in favor of removing any area from the urban growth boundary unless, as you said, like one area, and there was a sliver of, it was very difficult, hard to service at all. And we, we don't know, and it makes sense to go down to, you know, the Goose Creek area where you've got easily accessible to sewer, to gravity sewer already, and infrastructure right there. And so anything added on is very easy to do in that area. It's conducive to that. I know sometimes it does look so conducive out of East 96, but again, we don't know what technology will bring in the future for that.
Alderman Brown.
I get, and I, and I agree, generally speaking, if we've got the land, we don't want to lose it. My question on the Carter's Creek piece is, you almost kind of got a donut, right? You've got this county developed piece in the middle of Southern Farms, and you've got pieces around it, and not to mention all the challenging issues out there. And I won't hold my breath on that part of Mack Hatcher coming anytime.
Smart.
Yeah, exactly. Let me eat this apple, as my dad would say. But when I think about that area, though, what, if, especially as we think about Envision Franklin, and the idea that as you build around other areas, you need to, you know, sort of reflect the other neighborhoods in that area, it seems like that would be a very expensive area to develop, just given all that's going on there. You're not going to have high density to offset a lot of that cost or to bring that up, just given the makeup of that space. I just, I guess that's my question, is, it seems like a very challenging place for us and a very expensive place for developers and for the city to develop. And if, at that point, you know, I guess it doesn't hurt us to keep it in, but at the same time, not quite sure why we would, if at some point, it just becomes that much of a challenge for us to do.
So you're speaking exactly what we've been debating internally with staff for, for many months. So our original staff recommendation did include removing that area for those exact reasons, that the land use pattern will not likely pay for the costs of extending infrastructure. And, you know, as we as staff, we really look at that long-term fiscal sustainability. And when we look at the Goose Creek area, for example, the land use pattern and a lot of the types of land uses that are going to be able to be supported most likely in that area, Envision Franklin has a lot of it in regional commerce, neighborhood mixed use, mixed residential design concepts that are a little more intense than what you might see out South Hall Road area. Those can accommodate, those land uses can help offset the cost of the, the added infrastructure. So there is a fiscal sustainability component to consider. But as some other Alderman brought up, there is a question of, you know, if we do take it out, when can we get it back if we decide we want it? And those are unknowns. We haven't had this opportunity to look at the urban growth boundary in 20 years. So this is definitely one of those situations where there's not really a right or wrong answer. It's really about what the board prioritizes, and if it's, you know, kind of heading into the future with the idea that we don't have to develop it necessarily, but knowing what the limitations are and what the costs to develop some of these areas are, I think it can help you make wise decisions as you move into the future. But I think that's always something we all need to keep in the back of our mind if we do keep these areas in the UGB.
Alderman Black.
I don't know how many years ago it was, but I remember us allowing Thompson Station to, there was a piece of land that was coming up Carter's Creek Pike, so Thompson Station could extend sewer. So to me, my question would be, at what point does Thompson Station, I know they're way far from sewer, bless their hearts, it's, it's a hard battle for them, but, I mean, what is the likability of Thompson Station coming through Canard Springs and coming up till we almost abut? And then if we've given up that property in the UGB and we can connect, I mean, I, I understand the challenges, but I, I just think, we have all seen the growth. For those of us who've been here for a long time, we never would have imagined the world we live in today.
So I will say that we've worked with Thompson Station, their planning department, as well as all the municipalities in the county, in Williamson County. We meet on a, every two-week basis, and we, we are seeing what a lot of the proposals are. It doesn't, at this point, we're not seeing Thompson Station come up to where our UGB exists today. But what we do need to consider is how state law is written. So just because they don't place it into their UGB does not mean that they could not annex by referendum in the future. So that is something to still consider, that just because it's not shown on a map in the UGB doesn't mean that we won't ever abut each other's city limits.
Well, if we all remember the big golf development that did not pass, that was on Coleman Road, and that came pretty close to fruition, and that's not that far away. So all of that to say, I think if we've got something, our investment, and it's not fiscal, but our investment will never be in vain. So I see holding on to that. And the Goose Creek, I agree, was keeping those basins separate. And then lastly, it sounds cherry-picking, but I had brought up a family that lives on Hillview Lane that wants to remain in the UGB. And in these maps, it's really hard to scroll out, but from what I can tell, that is still encapsulated within the city limits now. So, and it's not just one property owner, it's, it's like a family who owns multiple acreage.
That's in?
Yeah. We're not making any changes to that area. We, we can get with you after and look at the specific property, but we're not planning to make, at least per these maps, we don't have anything added or removed in that area.
It's the end of Hillview Line, yeah. Go ahead, Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we're pressed on time right now, but as I'm looking at the requested to be removed from the potential UGB, this is on Long Lane, they're in Word 3, and I just want to, and maybe now's not the time, maybe we have to do it this, at the next work session, but I'd like to know more about the 2040 or, you know, 50-year plan on what it would take to get those areas into our UGB if we let them go right now.
And, you know, we're also happy, if anyone has some specific areas you'd like to, to speak about, I'd encourage you to reach out to Andrew Orr as well, and we can definitely provide some additional information on any of these areas if you'd like to have a, a meeting with Andrew or myself.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and finish the meeting, if it's okay, because there's going to be a lot of changeover effort. And I know that many of you, the new Alderman may have family, and you want to tend to them, get everybody settled in, if that's okay with everybody. And go ahead, Alderman. Did I not recognize you, Alderman Martin?
No, you didn't. I have one last word.
Is your mic on?
One last word.
Is your mic on?
Turn your mic on. Don't let it be your last word. Let it be one of many words.
One last word. We do not need to develop every single blade of grass in Williamson County. We can have the city of Franklin and have open space. Isn't that what we want? We don't like the density? Why do we have to, why do we have to talk about developing South Hall? You know, of course, they've got hills and places that are hard to develop. That's fine, but we could still have it. We don't have to develop it. And I think that residents would love it if we had places that were not developed, period.
10-second comment.
10-second. Who develops it?
I'm glad you asked. The property's owned MGA 1, so one unit per acre. So if a large tract comes in, requests annexation, and we decline it, it's zoned MGA 1, one unit per acre.
But who develops it? No, no, no. The developer develops it.
The property owner, the person itself, the property owner, yes.
And so all of this stuff about how much it's going to cost, and all this, the cost of the infrastructure, and all of this, we require the developer to put the infrastructure in, tell us when, tell us at some point in time when we don't do that. So the cost is irrelevant, I think, to a certain extent. I don't think you need to give up something that you have. And I will tell you, it's been there for 20 years. It really hasn't affected anything negatively that I know of, because I sit on the, I sit on the 1/8 of the board that was looked at, at South Hall, whenever we looked at the urban development, urban growth boundaries in 2002 or '03 once. So it's there. Leave it. It's not going anyplace. Margaret's right. She didn't want to develop every blade of grass.
I would just, I would just respond, but that's definitely something that has, has worked over time and can continue to work. Where I would just say to, something to keep in the back of your mind is, oftentimes, if the price of developing and paying for the infrastructure to go in by the developer is not something that really, where the land uses don't match up with that cost, they're going to develop in the county instead, which is okay. But what it does is it fragments how we build out our infrastructure system if somebody nearby wants to develop in the city. So it starts to make it very difficult to plan out our growth as a city when you have a county-city, county-city pattern.
Wouldn't you want to keep it in for that reason?
Well, that argument can be made as well, yeah.
So-
Go ahead. I'm going to let Eric, Eric's got the last word.
I'm going to say one thing. What I'd like to do, because we, I'd like to get this into the process if we can. I think we're pretty close to a pretty good consensus with y'all. Let's put it on for the 23rd work session as just sort of a follow-up. We won't do a presentation. We'll just say, you've seen it, you see what we have. There's really just these few couple questions left, but it gives you a chance to think about it, and also kind of gives us a little bit of a deadline to kind of have that discussion. And if we're comfortable, we'll move it on into the process. Again, it's preliminary, but if you're comfortable with that, we'll put it on the work session in two weeks. Thank you.